Well, I just want to thank Mr. Brownlow and Mr. Wood for the Veterans Day program yesterday. I thought it was very impressive, especially with the people that we did hear from. And I thought it was great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, we could all echo that. Great program. Then we'll move into our agenda. We don't have any modifications at this time? Or is there any other additions or corrections anyone has for the agenda? And I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's going to bring us right into administrative reports and we'll start with Ms. Hendricks.
All right. We've had a few events at our elementary school since our last board meeting. We had fire prevention week activities, so the fire departments from Kensington, Elbow Lake, and Hoffman brought trucks and did activities with the students and that was really, they always look forward to that. We had our color run at North and then our, they did like an obstacle course fun run at South, so a couple of different ways to get kids moving and they had a great turnout for fundraising, so those were some fun events at both of our elementary schools. We had our all-school assemblies for October where we focused on, focused on respect as our night pride value. This year, as part of our Justin's Renaissance Initiative too, we're having fourth grade students lead the assemblies. So that was really awesome. They led them through activities around respect and it was really fun to see them step into those leadership roles and they were really excited about it too. I guess they asked, like, when do we get to do this again? So we'll have different fourth graders throughout the, throughout the year leading, leading the assemblies and planning. They did all the planning and everything too. Our social worker, Ms. Anna, was the one who led the students, so she met with them, gave them some guidance as needed, but they really, the students did a lot of the planning, so we're also thankful to Ms. Anna for her leadership in that, or stepping into that role. And for November and December, we're focusing on responsibility. So students are working towards earning an all-school reward once we fill up a bucket with all their tickets and I think we're over halfway, which is a lot further than we were last year, so it's really fun to see if one kid has a count going of how many every time he turns one in. And at this number, so it's really fun for them to be excited about seeing all of their hard work pay off. We did have both PTOs donate $250 each to go towards our Renaissance fund as well, so we're thankful to the PTOs for contributing to that. In October, we had Lake's Country Service Co-op come and do ELA standards work with all K-12 ELA teachers and special education teachers and they're coming again in February to continue the work that they did with us at the beginning of the year. And then from now up until February, we're going to, as a staff, also continue some of that work, so then we're prepared for the next step when they, when Lake's Country returns. So it's exciting to have their expertise and guide us through some of that standards work. Last Friday for our PD day, we had letters training with K-4 teachers in special education and then Nate and Paul did some choice PD with those who did not have letters. And then this coming Friday for our early release, we are doing some work with our Wonders literacy curriculum for our K-5 teachers. And then other teachers are digging into things that they've been working on, preschool is doing conscious discipline training, continuing work for the PLC work that other staff had done before. And our paraprofessionals have their third session of letters training this Friday too, so they're really excited about that. Our quarter one ended on November 6th and report cards will be going home on Friday with students. And then in the report card, myself and our leadership team put together a letter to explain some of the changes. So with the new ELA standards, we needed to change some of our report card and the way that we were doing that, so it emulated what the updated standards were. So we did put together a letter explaining that to parents, so then they weren't surprised by the report card looking different. Monday and Tuesday this week, we had data days at both North and South, so we have the comprehensive team together because we really look at the whole child math, reading, SEL, and we look at, we look at their data to see if they're making progress in their interventions. Then we determine if we need to change anything, or if they are doing well, then they continue on the path that they're headed on. And then conferences are exciting time for parents and teachers and students to get together and that's coming up the end of November, so the 24th and the 25th. Monday, directions went home for parents to sign up through JMC and we just really look forward to that to set goals for the remainder of the school year, discuss the progress that they're making and then just that homeschool relationship piece. Any questions for me?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will move us to Mr. Wood.
Alrighty, we are kind of into that good rhythm here at the secondary school. First quarter is wrapping, wrapped up last week. Teachers are finalizing grades. Moving into November, we've got kind of a lot of things going on academically, some cultural pieces and crew readiness pieces to look at. Our Veterans Day program, as, as mentioned, was yesterday. Thought it went really well. It's kind of an important tradition for us and our students consistently show really good respect for our area veterans and it was a very, very powerful program, I thought. Fall musical is, performances are coming up this week. We had our all-school performance of the musical today. If you get a chance, I highly, highly, highly recommend you go check it out. It is fantastic. We have some very talented students and every year, I don't know how they're going to top the musical from the year before and continue to do so, but it is really, really good. As Caitlin mentioned, we've been working on, or started some PLC work. This is kind of, is broken into kind of a choose your own PD methodology where staff is able to choose one of three topics to focus on. One is book study on the book, The Anxious Generation. If some of you remember when we had angst as a documentary a few years back, this is the book that that documentary is based on, talking about the impact of technology and our overall mental well-being, both for students and adults. The second category is recognizing and supporting student attendance. How can we identify barriers for students attending school and support them getting to school? And then the third one is student connections, kind of making sure that every student in the building has at least one adult that they can feel connected to. So teams met on November 7th, kind of set roles, norms, and goals for the year and we'll meet regularly on our early outs to kind of continue to work on whatever area they chose. Kind of in the same vein of having some consistency with our year for our teacher evaluation in secondary, we're kind of breaking it into a three-pronged approach with some self-reflection, some video of yourself in one year, working with our instructional coach in the second year, and then your formal observation in the third year. I'm just adding a little bit more structure to what we've done in the past for that, that piece. Also, we know winter is a time when energy and attendance can dip for staff as well as students, so we're working on a staff wellness plan for our staff in the coming winter months, kind of focusing just on simple, easy things that staff can do to work on physical and mental wellness, some stress management, small challenges that we can build in, just to kind of get people thinking about it, drinking some water, you know, staying positive with their wellness. Other things going on, our National Honor Society collected over 4,000 pounds of food and over a thousand dollars in cash and donations for the Grant County Food Shelf and the Hoffman Food Shelf. Huge community impact and good reflection on our students doing that. Also wanted to touch on the YST grant that Mr. Swatzky had applied for and, you know, achieved in getting this past year. About forty percent of his contract time is funded by this grant and he's kind of worked some CTE pieces into this grant that will save the district about $86,000 over two years. Some of the current things going on with the YST grant is 25 students will complete OSHA 10. There's mileage reimbursement for students that are participating in our health field science class and driving back and forth to Elbow and different locations around the county. If students are in our work-based learning program, they can also apply for mileage reimbursement. We have our ninth graders going to some career exploration activities on December 5th, December 5th at Alec Tech. And then aligning some career exposure with our course registration will fit in this grant as well. The grant runs through August of 2027 and will be applying this winter for the next grant of 2027 through 2029. And it's, you know, Mr. Swatzky is putting a ton of time into this and it's really working well, so I imagine we will continue to receive that grant because they kind of look at what, what have schools done with this grant and then we'll continue to fund a lot of those things. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on, our November Renaissance theme is centering on gratitude. We'll be building a gratitude wall kind of over by the auditorium doors where students and staff can recognize one another, calling out kindness, highlighting good things happening at, at school. Part of our ongoing work to strengthen our culture and positive recognition. We also have about 20 students still volunteer to serve on our student Renaissance team to help keep the recognition student-led, have students a part of that. And then, as always, thank you as a board for your continued support of our staff and students. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I'm kind of interested in that winter staff wellness that kind of stuck out to me. I think that's really cool. Is that something that we maybe would do at the elementary as well?
They're, they're included in it, so I've been sending this stuff out to everyone else.
District-wide.
Yes. And it's very, it's kind of a work in progress right now, so we're figuring out some things that people are willing to do and what would help benefit people the most.
Anything there is.
Yeah. Yeah, just to think about it a little bit.
Well, and we even tied in one of the things for Tuesday, we tied it into our staff meeting. So like, some of those are like small things. It's like, oh, it's, it was about gratitude, the three things that are going well, so we tied it into our staff meeting just to recognize those positive pieces.
We don't want it to add any work, but want it to be something positive.
And then I don't mean to put you on, do you have times for that musical this weekend?
Seven, seven, and two, I believe.
I believe, yeah.
So seven Friday, seven Saturday, and two on Sunday. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. That's good for people that know.
Yes.
All right, any other questions, comments for Mr. Wood? Thank you, Mr. Wood. That moves us to Mr. Posleyn.
Well, this will probably be long since Mr.
Should I let everybody else go first?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll do my best to move along.
Okay.
First of all, congrats to Lydia Sweep and Sophia Jeanette on qualifying for their respective sports cross-country tour, or state tournaments this fall in girls tennis and cross-country. Thank you to all the game workers, refs, bus drivers, coaches, athletes, for everybody for contributing this fall season. The winter sports season is now on us with junior high girls basketball starting practice and 9-12 girls practice starting yesterday. So remember to stay up to date on the R-School app. Some of you may have noticed that is switching over to Arbiter. So if you see some different pieces, that's coming in effect next school year. There's some pieces we'll slowly transition to that. But on that app, remember there are schedules, there's live streams, bus times, dismissal times, comments that move place first, so really do your best to keep up with that because there are never any changes in the wintertime, so. Also, Huddle Fan is a good one too, now that we are streaming Court III as well. It's a static camera, but it, it does stream the activity as well as the events in the auditorium, so. Still looking for refs and game workers, so that's, it's always a, an item on my board report, as you know. I'm going to jump around a little bit here on my report. We met in October for corporate partners. We did approve several requests. We approved dollars for a softball scoreboard, of which the beams were installed yesterday and the board comes in in mid-December. We approve, we approved money for a, what's called an MX-1 controller for the baseball scoreboard, so they can control it now in the dugout without running a series of extension cords to try to control it. A down payment for the hoop shooting machine, which is in, money for robotics, money for branding and marketing, money for backboard lighting that was kind of in conjunction with the Elbow Lake Fire Department. That product came in yesterday, so that hopefully can be installed before the first game. Some money for new volleyball uprep stands at North and money for some supplies for golf. So lots of different programs were, were impacted and lots of good things were provided for those programs. So thank you for the corporate people that donated this year. Our next meeting will be in April or May and then our corporate partner recognition night is actually the boys' home and season opener on December 2nd against Hancock. So we're going to try to do it a little earlier this year than what we have in the past. Now, the, the big thing we'll go over is we are going to talk about GoFan. We all know we're starting online tickets December 1 and, you know, we've, it's not new news, it's crossed this table several times, it's been in the paper, but just so people know, we are going full cashless tickets. I'm going to walk everybody through here how to get the app, how to download it and, and so you can see what it looks like. So if you have your cell phones, students, this will be a little different for you guys because you're going to get a different code than what these people here are going to get, but you can still do the same process right with this. So if you have your cell phone, download the GoFan app in your app store. What it looks, oop, that's the wrong app. What it looks like, it's a black box and it says GoFan in text on there. And I get this is going to take some time, I'm sorry, but you will see how kind of easy it is once you get in there.
Like a little arrow in the G of, or the O of Go?
Yep, yep. And some people already have it and that's okay, but we'll, we'll create an account so you can see what it's like. I'll give you a minute or two. And with that, you're going to see some signs like this in our buildings. We're going to put one up at North and South and here, and I may put some up at some area businesses just so they can see how to get some tickets. I have 12 of these, so we might as well use them instead of just leave them sit in my office. So, once you get the app downloaded, do not type anything in the search box. You're going to want to look in the lower bottom right and click on profile. That one right there, GoFan. What you'll see out of events as you guys are getting it downloaded, you will see these two items. These are the items that people can buy tickets on site if they don't want to pre-buy them. The hope is to take the ticket table and slide it to the center instead of keep it on the side where it's traditionally been. One side will be for prepaid and one side will be for people who need to buy their. People who have prepaid, all they will do is they call up their ticket on their phone, tap the ticket and they're in. It, it's really that simple. I wish I could say it's harder than that, but it's not. If you bought multiple tickets, there's a button you have to hit to show all the tickets that you bought. So when you, or if you need to buy tickets on, upon arrival, the ticket people, and I have already talked to post-prom about it, they add the ticket. Sorry, I got to go here. They go in and confirm the ticket, you add the ticket and you check out and it's, it's almost that easy too. You can tap, you can insert, you can Apple Pay right from here. So again, I, I would, I would say it's difficult. It will be difficult, maybe for the first couple of events, but once we know how it works, I think it will go pretty smoothly. So, so that's why I brought those items, so you could see what those items are. If everybody has it downloaded, click on profile and you'll scroll down from there and click sign up. You're going to go, why are we doing this? Because I think you're going to want to know how it works, so when people ask you, how do we get tickets? You know how it works as well. In that signup, you'll create an account. Their passwords are super long. I know Kevin is here. I know tech guys like really long, complicated passwords, so I think it's a 12, 12 digits or whatever password. So you've got to work at the password. That's going to take some time.
I did. I got to figure out what I put.
It's too good. So once you have created that, then you go to join GoFan and agree and that gets you into your account, so. And it should.
No, have I lost everybody so far or am I, are we doing?
Why are you looking at me?
Once you've gone to agree, then you can go to the search schools and type in west central area. And you will be able to earmark that as your school. And if you get to a red screen that looks like mine, you've done it the way you're supposed to do it, so.
So it says home and away. Can you buy Minnewaska tickets through here too then?
So when, when we are linked with other schools that we, or when we're playing other schools who offer GoFan tickets, yes.
Okay.
Well, so you must have an account already.
We're going to have to give you a whole difference, so. So if you've got to the screen where it says WCA staff pass, that is a, no different than what we're doing right now. That is a free pass for staff. Students, there is a free student pass on there for you as well. So you don't have to pay. You click on bypass and then it's going to ask for an access code. That is the access code. You type in the access code, you have to enter some information. I, there's no way I can get around this, sorry. Type in west central area. Yep. And then you should just follow the steps and it'll bring you right to your staff pass.
Okay, click on west central area.
Yep.
Staff pass.
Yep. Here's your access code. If it's not our district number, that would be too easy, so we'll pick a different number. And then you'll see I did open up a series of, oh yeah, you got to add a ticket though. You can't buy zero tickets, you got to buy one. Yeah. So that is, that's basically how you've created your account, how you've got your staff pass. Now, if somebody needs to buy a ticket, you can see other ones that are on here, all the other games. You click on buy tickets. So it's, I, again, I, I get it's going to create some consternation, but I think once we do it a few times, I, I don't. Nope, you might pass and you're good. The hope is, and, and I think eventually we'll get there, is instead of our staff and students just walking through like we've done and it works, just show the pass, just so we know. Yep, then we get a count, yep. So the, the biggest thing, and, and I got to thank Derek Abraham's at Fergus, they've gone cashless for a couple of years and he said, honestly, it really just kind of goes. It, it's been very, very simple for them. He said the biggest thing is getting people on their phones and on the app and try to buy tickets beforehand and we will try to pump that as much as we can. Again, the opportunity to buy them at the gate will still be there, but buy them beforehand. You, you saw the winter season pass was on there as well. Yeah, the other pass that we talked about that crossed your place was the senior and grandparent pass. We enlarged it here. These will be on sale in the office. I did prorate it. I believe we had it 100 for the year, count of the events, and that price is lowered to 72 for the winter. So those can be bought during school hours in the office. And people that buy that pass, they don't have to go online, download any ticket, they can just bring that paper pass to the gate. There is some information for them to fill out. It's more just our record keeping, so we, we had that. So Jenny has put those together. Those will go on sale next week. We'll put some pieces out on Facebook and social media as well, so. Yeah, any, any questions on the app and the ticket procedure? Seems okay, seems doable. Students, doable? Yeah? I'll send you your code, so you don't have to worry about that. It's not this one. Okay? And just kind of in closing about, about GoFan, again, we, we talked about the senior and the grandparent pass. We talked about the staff and student pass. We will continue with EMTs and veterans. They do not need to purchase a ticket, they do not need to go online. They can just state who they are. I'm an EMT, I'm a veteran and you're in just like we have done in the past, so, so that procedure doesn't change. Talked about the card reader, how that's going to work. Again, people preferably buy online. The ticket link from GoFan, we'll, we'll insert right into our school, so that, that will be there. And, and I guess kind of my last comment is, online tickets really aren't new to our fans. We, we've gone to Fergus for how many playoff games? We've been to state basketball, state wrestling, state football, state volleyball. All of those pieces are online. So it's going to be new maybe to here, but I, I don't, I don't see it being a, a challenge. The, the people I've talked to, they go, well, this isn't legal, legal, what do they say, tender legal money? Yeah, it is. It's all, what we're doing here is totally legal. We're not trying to scam anybody. One guy said just, there, there will be resistors. Yep, this is just how it is. You don't get to say that at, at the Grand Casino Arena or US Banks. I'm not paying you, that's your option to pay. So it's a change. I recognize that it may not be easy, but I'm also confident we can do it, so.
Did you mention, and may, maybe I was engulfed in trying to get the app to work to
You don't need it.
Corporate sponsors?
They can continue to use their pass.
They can just use their little card that they get mail. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was covered.
All, all of those pieces that we've done in the past, there's no need to go and you already have your pass to get in, so.
Maybe you already do this on conference nights, having a table to help people with attendance if you want to.
You know what? That's, that's a good idea.
I don't know.
That is a good idea. I did not even think about that. Well, I think I can put out some information if nothing else.
Yeah.
We're not out to come talk to us and.
Maybe you have a help desk or they just pick up information.
Good idea, Claire.
I would need to be at the help desk.
I, I've seen your tech skills. You'll be okay.
I did help desk.
Just to reiterate, grandparents, if they're not district, as long as they're grandparents, they get on the list.
Grandparents or, yep, yep. But that, that is bought solely during school hours in, in the office, so.
So if they don't live here, it might have to send in a grandchild or somebody like that.
Might have to do something, yep, yep. All the passes you're going to see are non-transferable. I can't buy a pass and then transfer it to Darren, so, or whoever. Tickets you can transfer. I can buy and send Claire one and it'll show up as a text message. You won't even need the app. You can click on the text message, a ticket shows up, so.
Okay. But not passes. Tickets but not passes.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Any other questions?
It wasn't that long, Mr. Brownlow.
Wasn't terrible.
I didn't see the yellow marker, so. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.
Uh, that brings us to Mr. Ryan.
All right, so for community, I'll start a theme. October's theme was success at North. We had 29 students and at South, we had nine. November's theme is currently in session. They went on a field trip to Otter Cove yesterday at Fergus Falls. Youth basketball and youth wrestling registration occurred in the last couple of weeks. There's just a couple of people coming in now, just kind of finalizing that kind of stuff.
I'll take that paper back.
Andy Ski signups are currently live and they'll start going there on December 4th. Co-ed volleyball signups are also currently open and that starts on the first Thursday in December. I'm currently talking to a company out of St. Cloud for the 55-plus class because ARP doesn't offer the in-person classes anymore and so I'm working with them to see if they are willing to come out. Drivers ed training for students is scheduled for July 6th through the 17th and play and learn classes are going to begin at the end of November and December.
Did you say volleyball was on Thursday nights?
Wednesday nights, sorry.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, you're right.
They seem to always be coming in and out during our meetings. That's the only reason I ask, not, not that it matters to me, but.
Hey, probably should run that by the activities director. That might cost a little bit of money.
Yeah, Thursday nights would be a little struggle probably in, in, every month. So, yeah, perfect. All right, any other questions, comments from Mr. Ryan? That will bring us to Mr. McAmaro.
Good evening, everyone. Got it before we, yeah, good job.
I'll get ready.
Sail in Tuesday.
I'll get ready, yeah.
Perfect. So from a technology standpoint, you know, on day-to-day, everything can, you know, some days. So from a technology standpoint, you know, on day-to-day, everything can, you know, some days are, 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 a lot some days are a little bit smoother. The biggest thing is so far, everything that we need to be working for students and instruction is working. JMC continues to get better, um, we're fixing some of our syncing issues that we have with some of our third-party applications. It's starting to come together, it was a little bit of a rough start to the school year, but it is rapidly getting better. And a huge part of that is the fact that Stacy can multitask like a magician. I can't single task sometimes, and multitask is not part of my, my strength, so the fact that Stacy can take on ten different tasks and kind of simultaneously do all of them is amazing to me, so she is absolutely incredible. One of the pieces that has, keeps crossing across my email, my screens, all those pieces, is there's a gig- gigantic push right now for how are we going to position ourselves to use AI in education? Artificial intelligence is here, um, a lot of times we kinda push it away and act as if we aren't going to address it, or we wanna keep things the way they were, but that just is not reality. So I've kinda been digging deep into two different paths of how can we position ourselves to leverage what's coming? And one of the, the eye-opening pieces to me was, there's like three or four different groups, Google being one of them, that are right on the verge of quantum computing, which is gonna be, they claim thirteen thousand times faster than our current supercomputers. So the, the rapid pace of technology is going to change significantly once that happens. So, the, the first path is how can we leverage artificial intelligence to buy back time for our teachers and our staff? There's a huge push right now to how can artificial intelligence help to curb the teacher burnout rate? We have a huge teacher burnout rate, we're understaffed, we're underfunded, all those pieces. How can we leverage those tools to try and take on not the instruction? Because the, the art of teaching will never be replaced by artificial intelligence. However, a lot of their, the busy work, the tasks, all of those pieces could be taken on by some of those higher-level computing. And how can that allow teachers to actually focus on teaching? You know, amazing thought. So that's kinda one piece, Google is offering a ton of information on, I have a, a seminar coming up next, right in the beginning of December about all of the new Google for Education products that are coming out. Oh, and I gotta take one step back. Part of the reason why artificial intelligence is now actually working nice and playing nice with education is because they have found a way to use the, your personal data without exposing it. So, um, the, the secure artificial, artificial intelligence, instead of keeping all of the attributes that it's learning about you in a cloud space, it is keeping it directly on the device itself. So that allows it to be compliant with our educational data and all those pieces. So it allows education to absorb some of the artificial intelligence pieces that we couldn't use before. The other part of it is the student side of it, the instructional piece of it. You, you look at some technologies and it can be a, a direct replacement, and some people look at artificial intelligence and AI as if it's just another form of Google. But the problem is, is we have to change our thought on that, and artificial intelligence can't be a answer. It has to be a mechanism used to enhance understanding. And that's where we need to work with teachers and integrate it into Google Classroom and all those pieces. Of when students don't understand something, how can we leverage artificial intelligence to help build that understanding and that learning piece of it, not just jump them right to the answer?
It's a calculator, not a cert.
Right, yes, it, it, it's a tool. The biggest piece is, it's, it's a big change from what we're used to doing, and obviously, you know, since COVID, tons has changed in education, it's been very good for education. I have a feeling that a lot more change is coming, and I wanna make sure that our district is ready and put ourselves in a proper position to be able to use that to our advantage. But overall, i- you know, I think there's a lot of exciting things that come. There are a ton of advantages to still using some of the old, old-school tools. And that's one of those pieces where I am a huge advocate for some of our teachers who want to print off a worksheet, not in color, black and white. And then. But to do those things paper, pencil, and to, to do some of those hands-on pieces, it's important. And what can we do to leverage that well-rounded education instruction? And I think AI is really a, a tool that I'm looking to, to how can we use that to, to buy back that time for our staff? Cause I think that's, that's the biggest hurdle that we're dealing with in education is just staff burnout. And too many people getting spread too thin, and I know firsthand that when you get spread too thin, you don't do anything well. Everything's done so-so.
So you're saying I can keep my advocates for a while?
Yes. And, and don't call it an antique. Questions?
Any questions?
I've got nothing else.
Well, I think just the value too, of probably explaining to our kids what, how AI is gonna change the world, just sitting with some people over the weekend, and how they said, you know, it's gonna be awfully difficult to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year or two at a law school when this potentially, I mean, there's gonna be positions that AI could start to replace, and does make you think a little bit before you go into accounting, I mean, there's still gonna be certain tasks, but it is a little, but, cause there's, future son-in-law was looking at doing that, and so I think he's starting, coming up, and it's like, yeah, that'd be a hard investment of three hundred thousand, and thinking, how long is that investment gonna last before AI can, cause it can put together some pretty neat pieces there, but you still need to evaluate it, right? I mean, if you just take it, push it into the computer and don't look at it, it may not get you what you were hoping to end up with.
Right, a- and, and that's that focus on using it to, to build understanding versus just a blind answer. I think that's an important part, and I think in education, one of the valuable pieces, I don't see it replacing people and positions we have, but I do see it replacing tasks.
Who's used it to write a paper already?
Am I being coming in?
No, not, nope, nobody in here.
Remove all AI markers.
It's just amazing when you go to some of the fast food places, and the Taco John's, I know, in Alec, you don't talk to a person, it's all done right there, and it's all done, so it's, I mean, they are replacing times, sometimes some of those folks, but, but not necessarily replacing, finding ways to fill those positions they couldn't fill.
We need to teach them how to use it responsibly, just like cell phones or anything else, because in less than two years, if you're not using it, you're gonna be too slow of an employee to keep your own.
Well, and that's what I'm finding, and a lot of the things I'm looking at, is a lot of companies are saying, use, use AI to make, to make yourself more efficient, or you're not gonna have a job.
We're gonna affect so much out of our employees that this is the only tool that's gonna allow them to keep up to what we expect of them. Our kids gotta learn how to use it, they gotta learn how to use it the right way. So we can't hide from it, we gotta, we gotta get it in their lives, it's already in there, you can see by the smiles, they need to do it all the time.
That's funny, that probably is the truth, right? The people at this table need to learn how to use it, tho- the people at those two tables, they've already got it mastered, so.
That's right.
Well, you know, i- it's even things like learning how to manipulate what you're inputting into it to get out what you want, and the right information, and and a lot of those pieces is, it's, it's that change in memorization to application. Um, and I think also one of the great things that artificial intelligence can do is it can increase the different ways that students can express their learning and their knowledge and show what they can do, instead of just taking a test or making a post, all those things, there's so many different mediums they can use to demonstrate their learning.
There's still, like, it's just gonna re- it enhances some of the things that we've done forever, like reading, how important is reading gonna be? When something pops that message out to you, but you still have to read it, you still have to comprehend it, if you're not reading it, you still have to comprehend listening to it. So those, those things that we've worked on for fifty years are even as important or more important than they've ever been, you know, reading. Now, make sure it's right.
Anything for me?
Thank you, Kevin, Mr. Hornberg.
Alright, um, you guys got my report there, I was just gonna add a few things, uh, to update on that. Curtains for South have been ordered, uh, for the stage and for the backdrop back there. Those should be coming in middle to end of next week, so we'll be good to go for the concerts down there. Boiler parts for that South have actually showed up, and they were installed yesterday. So we're, both boilers are available to be up and running, but I've not started the fuel oil one because it's not cold enough. I'll get plenty of phone calls if I do, so, once it cools back down, we'll do that. Second, or, uh, North boilers, both of them, so I've got those snugged up, and both of them have been up and running at intermittent times, so we're good to go there. Generator, we still have issues with our main generator here, we have, uh, bearings that are out in the pulleys on it, so they are on order, and we're waiting for them to come in, and as soon as they get in, they will be here to put those on. Our big water to water project, um, three of the four units are here, two of them are actually sitting in our loading dock. They started prep work today, um, gave me an agenda that they will be here tomorrow, doing a little more prep work. The fourth unit is supposed to show up Monday, and they will be here Monday actually to pull out our four units, and Tuesday, put in the new ones, and hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be up and running, um, with a soft startup. At that point, there's a little bit of contingency, well, I shouldn't say contingency, discussion between Ellingsons and the carrier company in Florida, whether they're gonna allow them to do the hard startup, or they're gonna have to have a rep, um, either from Florida or somewhere come up to do the official hard startup. That's not up to us anyways, I mean, that's, that's on Ellingson's windshield anyway. But they are here, and we're working on that, and that should be up and going hopefully by the first part of about this time of week from now. We should be good to go with those. And we have a, our, uh, kind of six-month safety walkthrough of all three buildings that we'll be doing next week with Wayne from Lakes Country. Just part of their work with us, we go through twice a year and just do safety walkthroughs, checkups, look at some of the asbestos. December, we do an actual asbestos walkthrough of both North and South, but this is just an overall general safety thing. I am also meeting with Chad, uh, from Alec's Glass tomorrow morning at six, um, just to try and get some of these doors and latches and things that we have that are in rough shape just from, um, the amount of use that they have. We also have the, there was a, down at South, we have a center post that just because of age and, uh, the salt and stuff being used, it's rusted out, so it's getting pretty loose. They do have that one ordered, we'll be getting that put in, so everything can get secured. Walter from Binco, uh, Wednesday, I think next week, we were able to get together, he's gonna come and do a walkthrough of all three buildings, well, not of, uh, through the buildings, but at our site that we want to put, um, cameras in, so the secretaries at the front desk can see who's at our Aphones, the beeper buttons, we don't have cameras in any of those. And unless they sit and specifically watch cameras, our security cameras, once the people get to the Aphones to push the button to be allowed in, our cameras can't see right underneath themselves. So this will allow them to not have to worry about, okay, where did they come from, who is it, what is it, if we're not expecting somebody to help with that secure issue? And then I am down, uh, a staff member, um, so we are looking for another one. I do have Mark back itself, so that helps significantly from, um, the summer injury he acquired. And the rest of the staff, we do have a couple of part-time people that we have hired that are helping to fill in nicely now, but we, we do need to have one more full-time staff, so. That's where I'm at. Any questions? For me, any concerns?
So Chad, I think the big thing was just really re- reiterating, we'll use our school safety funds, safe school funds, really for those doors. And we have some accessibility pieces that we're getting set up here too, cause some of the doors weren't opening, so we're getting that taken care of as well for people to get when they push the.
Handicap.
Handicap, we have accessibility pieces there, and then I think those Aphones, just clarify, it's the back door at North, you know, where they come in for morning preschool, it's the loading dock here, also, I think by Mr. Swatzky's egg space, and then down at South by the cafeteria. So what they do is they buzz, and then they talk, we couldn't see anybody there, so we're just gonna make sure that that's safer piece there, and then I think the other one that you, has been on your radar is the staging, right, for, um, our concerts and graduation here. You're working, you got that in your report, but you got that ordered. We didn't get the, near the amount of revenue that we were hoping through donations, but we still need to get those ordered, that's been Darren, I think you mentioned, it's been on the docket for a long time, so we're ordering them, um, and we'll get those ready to go.
Alright, thank you. That brings us to you, Mr. Bromo.
Mine might be a little bit of duplication, so we'll go quickly, but student enrollment, um, our monthly enrollment report here is, if you look on the, if you click on the student enrollment tab, on the, on the my report, it should take you to showing you September, October. Those were in the last few months reports there, and now we're November, so you're gonna see that our student count there is down, overall district is down by one student, so we've remained relatively consistent here. September, starting at seven seventy, jumping up to seven seventy-two, and now seven seventy-one. Preschool numbers, or at least our little nights up, uh, down at South, has jumped up by three students, reflecting that number down below there, so we are, if you look at our K-12 total, we are at six hundred and ninety-one students for K-12, and remember, that's where a majority of our funding, we do get a little bit of the VP, VPK funding, um, from that. Just wanted to mention that Holly Madwick has done a nice job of getting everything ready to go for the census, as well as our pathways scholarships and our VPK scholarships. That was revenue that, we, especially our pathways, we should've seen that revenue over the last few years. It just wasn't seen all the way through, and so Holly's done a nice job of making sure, helping those families complete those applications, so we'll have that revenue coming in, which will be helpful, as Fund Four has been in a deficit, so that'll be a great piece there to have that, so, um, uh, our appreciation for Holly to take care of that work and, and getting that taken care of there. As well then, is, um, professional learning communities, Mr. Wood already talked about that, but I think really the idea, you know, this isn't a traditional PLC, I would con- say, because it's not based in a content area, right? Typically, you would sit down with a math department or an English department, but really trying to figure out what are some of our system issues that we believe we need to address, of course, attendance is one of those. And so we're looking at that, I think cell phones has been a talk for a while, so here's that book study that Mr. Wood was talking about, the administrators through Lakes Country did this last year, and so I think it's just a great opportunity, talking about how students' brains are rewired. Of course, it'll also allow students to kinda just remove themselves, you know, if they're on their cellphone, but I think sometimes too as well, it's a decent way to, if you're at home, if kids are on that, then it kinda takes care of them as well. So there's some great resources there, and hopefully we can find some ways to hopefully curb some of those concerns, and I think that last one, and I know I've talked a little bit to, uh, to Mr. Fosling, is really activities. Do we have all the activities here, now this is that delicate balance, right? We've had other groups come in and say, hey, we'd like to offer this or offer that. But I think at certain times throughout the course of the year or school years, we need to look at, see, are there students that maybe would participate in a school activity if we had that available? Now, I think we've talked about esports a little while back, and that might be one of those, but we'll survey our students. That's what that PLC, PLC group wants to do, is survey those students, then come back to say, hey, here's some opportunities that some of our kids, we've got a lot of robust programming, as Mr. Wood said, the theater department, music, um, we've got the other activities, sports and things like that, but are there some of those pieces that we're possibly missing that might help bring more students or increase a better attendance rate? Cause I would say that probably the kids that are here, if they've got a basketball game, they're probably coming to school or wrestling. Cause I would say that probably the kids that are here, if they've got a basketball game, they're probably coming to school or wrestling. They're gonna come to school that day, right? But if you have nothing, then there's not really anything to come to school for in certain cases for some of those students. We really wanna look at that. So really the purpose behind this at the end of those four or five months is hopefully to create systemic change. I told them, and their charge was if they come back to the board and say, hey, here's the review we've done, here's the um data that we have. We believe we need to look at a school social worker to help with attendance. Are there barriers that maybe we've identified and if we can go out and work through those barriers? Maybe that'll help some of those students come to school. Maybe we need to look at other activities. Does that help as well? And so I said, I think that's a great way them, for them to review those pieces, study those pieces, survey and come back with data to say, hey, these are some systemic changes we believe make WCA a different place and help our climate and culture. So don't be surprised in, in February, March, if you start to see things that uh maybe some requests. Now, remember, I also have to keep charge of the budget as well, so it'll be one of those fine lines and balances there. But really wanna do that to hopefully make some change that way. Justin's Renaissance, um, I know that there's talk about some other pieces being added, but I think the gratitude wall, as you mentioned. Uh, one of the things that I've seen other schools do is putting out a survey or a Google form out to the general public as well on Facebook. So maybe a community member can put something in about a teacher or an administrator or a food service worker or something like that. And we'll share that on the wall as well. We will have that filter through probably Mr. Wood and Ms. Hendricks just to make sure that if there is something that's inappropriate, that we take care of it. So it's not just immediately filtered out there, but again, impacting hopefully the entire community and getting feedback. Cause I think a lot of our folks would have positive things there. Wanna thank the Elbow Lake Fire Leaf as well. They did donate fifteen hundred dollars towards the Justin's uh work that we're doing. And so we're excited to take that funding and do some great things. We just received the stickers that I think Mr. Wood helped design on the shields up for John. So we'll be getting those out, so students will be recognized. Think the idea right now is lockers for academic or attendance purposes there. Um, we've also tried to figure out other ways to recognize staff as well, just through some shout-outs and random door knocks and things like that. So really hoping to change culture that way. Uh, MSBA Leadership Conference uh is coming up here and some exciting news there. Mr. Swatzky will be presenting Thursday, uh, the fifteenth of January. So we did submit a request to have him present at the school board's convention, so that'll be from two forty-five to three forty-five. So that's a prime time spot, so I think they did appreciate seeing what the application included, so he'll be going down there. Um, they have opened up the registration, so if you're able to go either Thursday, Friday or both, please let me know cause it will fill up here, I would say probably by mid to end December of hotels and stuff like that. So if you're able to get away to go down there, it's been nice to have a group of folks go down there in the past. And we'll definitely want folks down there to support our FFA, our ag stuff there. And so I think really the, the tagline is how do you work with the community? Community partners to develop a robust CTE program by also raising a million dollars. Well, it's gonna get quite a few people. I think it's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be there. So we'll have to have a lot of handouts and probably crowd control as well, Mike, if you can handle that. So have that piece there. Um, I guess two, I didn't have on the Veterans Day program, but again, appreciate our music teachers for getting everything ready to go. Mr. Wood always has a great way with words to say things. Um, our staff really fills up the entire auditorium, so part of that conversation is do we need to move to the gymnasium? The acoustics and everything are awesome in the auditorium, so we've got a space like that. I would like to keep that there if we can. However, I'm always surprised with the number of general community members that come that aren't veterans. We get a lot of veterans and thanks to Jenny and Andrea for getting the breakfast ready to go. Our end team did a great job. They just take it and they go with it. They, they know how I work, I think, a little bit. They're like, hey, we're just gonna do this, cause I'm still trying to give directions, well, maybe you should do this. And they just took over, so it was nice to see that. Nice to get a lot of the nice compliments afterwards, but again, grateful for our veterans. But I think to me, the most powerful piece was seeing our three students, seniors up on stage in uniform and on how they carry themselves. That's awfully amazing. Then to hear their stories about, gave them purpose, here's what they're gonna do. And so I thought that was very neat. And then also having four brothers in the same family that were here as well, wearing their uniforms as well. Was a, so the Olson family being there too, that was Mr. Wood's idea. And so I think having them there was an awesome piece and Wyatt did a marvelous job of sharing um the information that he had. So it's just a neat thing to see there. And for me, I want our students to recognize and understand the importance of what service means to our community, our school, our country. Those people are making an, an incredible sacrifice. And I think sometimes we forget about that. And so just having them witness that, and I think they did a good job. The challenge that I gave them yesterday was to go out and see how they can do some service over the next couple of weeks, either at home, church, community, anything like that. So um, a couple of things at the end when we're done. Region one, if you wanna serve on the region or uh be nominated for the region one board, there's some information there. Lakes Country has their voting coming up, so it's too late to get your name into that one. But we need to have you vote for their board of directors. And I've got some information from MSBA on some upcoming trainings and things like that that are in this envelope here. And then you'll see all the things that are coming up here in November uh prior to Thanksgiving break.
All right, any questions for Mr. Brownlow?
Oh, I did have one last piece, I'm sorry. My bottom one. Um, so we remember held off on our snow removal quotes and uh accepting those. Maggie and I did review the billing from Grow Green and did notice that there are several bills prior to my arrival, all the way back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, that were not paid. Um, so we checked our system, that we looked at the invoices that they provided. And so a lot of that was irrigation repair. Um, there must have been some trees that were removed, four trees back here when the greenhouse went up cause it looked like it was four trees back there that were taken care of, some snow removal, some cleanup in October, November over those, course of those two years. So we do have a significant dollar amount um to pay to them in back pay uh to get that cleaned up and so we can move forward and have that ready to go.
All right, well, that brings us to our old business item. Um, you'll see the award, the snow removal quotes. Um, you've got that document there. I think everything is pretty much the same as last year. There was no, uh, no changes on the actual quotes from either last year, is that correct?
I think there was just one add, the L ninety-five Bobcat loader. Um, there's a hundred fifty dollars per hour charge if they would use that um for Grow Green. They did remove the walk behind snow blowers, that was on there, but they no longer have that included, but everything else remained the same. So the recommendation is looking to have Grow Green take care of snow removal at North Elementary and the Secondary School. And then JMJ Customs Services down in Kensington at the South Elementary.
All right, any questions, comments on that?
I do have a comment on that. Um, last year, uh, several sporting events, we had, you know, maybe a little snow, but it didn't trigger that, that minimum accumulation for uh snow removal. Can we make an effort to on, on nights that we have home events here? Get our courtyard area cleared out, cause we, there were a lot of times that you were walking through some decent snow and it's, it's not safe. We got a lot of, you know, elderly that try to make it up that concrete pad and we got, we got snow everywhere. So, you know, if it's a, if it's a case of we're having a, you know, wrestling meet or a basketball game, whatever, we need to make sure that if there's something out there, it needs to get
At least the eight foot path.
Right, well, yeah, but, you know. And a- at least get them safely to the door, cause there was several times last year that we didn't do that. And, you know, that, that doesn't look good on us as a school either, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing right by everybody that's coming in this building.
We can do that.
All right, you got that, Chad? I know a couple of those times was during our short staff time where we were, we were, we were out staffed, right? I'm not, I'm not arguing with the concept here, I'm just saying, I know a couple of those for sure.
Not anybody.
Yep, we can do better. All right, so then I would look for a motion to approve the snow removal or accept the snow removal bids? Is that how we wanna word that?
Yeah, or award.
Award the snow removal.
For both of those, yep. Darren?
Yep, second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, we got the first reading of the following policies. Uh, policy six ten field trips, policy six twelve point one, development of parent and family engagement. Policy for Title One programs, uh, policy six thirteen, graduation requirements. You guys might wanna read that. Uh, policy six fourteen, school district testing plan and procedures. Again, that's the first reading. Are there any questions or any comments on any of those, Mr. Brownlow, that you'd like to?
No, most of those are relatively consistent. There's just a few grammatical pieces that are there that they've had changes, but otherwise it's relatively the same.
All right, so again, that was just the first reading. Uh, it brings us to six point two. Uh, a resolution, um canvassing return on votes of school district special election. And I suppose that's one I gotta read. Maybe, this one, it'll have the numbers. All right, so be it resolved by the school board of independent school district two, three, four, two as follows. It is hereby found, determined and declared that the special election of the voters of the district held on November fourth was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specific in the attachment abstract in return of votes cast, a total of four hundred and three voters of the district voted in said election on the election of one school board member for an unexpired term expiring the first Monday in January twenty twenty-seven. Uh, caused by the board member resignation, the voting results are as follows. Christopher W. Anderson, a hundred and ninety votes, Ryan Sauer, two hundred and nine votes. Um, the overvotes, I'm not sure what that is, but there was four of those, so.
Overvote is if people voted for both. I learned that myself as well, so if they marked both, that's an overvote.
All right, and they don't count, just so you know. So don't vote for both if you can only do one, all right. Uh, so Ryan Sauer, having received the highest number of votes, is elected to the office of school board member of independent school district two, three, four, two for an unexpired term expiring the first Monday in January twenty twenty-seven. So I would look for a motion for that resolution. And a second, and that'll be a roll call vote. Um, Sauer?
Yes.
I will be in the yes. Ulrich?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
And Gross?
Yes.
All right.
Who are we giving the second to, Claire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes. All right, and then we have the resolution, excuse me, authorizing issuance of certificate of election. So that one says, the board has canvassed the special election for the school board member held on November four, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore, be resolved, the school board of independent school district two, three, four, two, state of Minnesota as follows. The chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certi- certificate of election on behalf of the school board of independent school district two, three, four, two to the following candidate. Ryan Sauer, who has received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill a vacancy on the board caused by a board resignation based on the results of the canvas. All right, so I would need a motion for that resolution to accept. And a second. And a roll call, I'll be a yes. Ulrich?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
And Sauer?
Yes.
All right, motion, resolution passes. All right, that moves us to uh the following personnel items. Um, we have one resignation, Danielle Passer Custodian, and we also have a hire of Steve Escobar Van Driver. Did you wanna comment on that at all, Mr. Brownlow?
I can. So remember, transportation, we've been in discussions on that for a long time of what can we do to possibly help some of those costs? I think a former board member even talked about looking at Uber or something like that to help, but this is, we've got the vehicle now. So we've purchased a um transport vehicle that's uh accessible uh for wheelchairs. And so now we're going to take advantage of using that van. Um, otherwise, there's additional charges that they charge and Steve's already been trained in that. He knows how to, to work the van. And so the recommendation there is to have a van driver. Now, this may expand even further as we see, cause we're able to eliminate two routes that we were using and covering it with one van driver in the morning. Or the timeframe is about an hour to an hour and a half, so we don't have anything in a current agreement for transportation. Um, so the recommendation is to pay twenty-five dollars an hour, cause really to make it worth the person's time for one hour in the morning to get up and do that, that's not a whole lot of pay. Sometimes it'll take an hour and a half and we'll continue to look to see if we've purchased maybe another van. If we feel like this is a, a good savings, especially if it comes to any of our special trips because of the fact that there is reimbursement. Uh, we've now found out that, you know, we purchased the van, we're able to now get, you know, using funding um through medical assistance. And we found that there's some opportunity even now to get the reimbursement still from, from the state for special ed. So I believe it's gonna be a good way to move forward and continue to try to look to save money where we can and still providing a very good service. So thanks to Mr. Fosline for reviewing those routes and putting that all together. I think the last couple of days for him, transportation coordinator has become a lot more involved. But uh, he's got it figured out and, and Steve will do a nice job of making sure that we get our kids, get our students to and from. And it's nice to have someone who's well versed in that, uh, in that world.
Let me comment on that, just so you guys, just so board members, you know, that van goes out in the morning. It then makes a trip uh starting Monday, eleven forty-five. It comes back, makes another trip at twelve thirty, brings some students to work, comes back, brings students home again at three o'clock. So we are using that vehicle significantly. It is every day.
On top of our morning route, right? That's just taking kids to, a good investment.
So you're saying if we get our own fleet, you're gonna manage the transportation.
I am not saying that, I, I will.
Got that handled.
He does like, he does like vehicles, so.
In, in some of it, we're just trying to find efficiencies where we can. And, and you know, the, we're, we're so used to the Palmer-Butt system and, and it's worked. But we feel we have now some capabilities to take it on our own and personally, we're willing to help. So let's not utilize it. I mean, we'd be foolish if we didn't utilize it.
I think we're enjoying both of that, right?
Right.
Flex with the situation.
Right?
Yep.
And, and even the other day Palmer called, hey, can we maybe trade a student that we're picking up and you guys pick up? So that was nice to have that conversation, so. But it, it is a little stressful, I'm gonna lie, so.
All right.
Mr. Wood did not volunteer to be my admin assistant on the. Strongly declined.
So he'll be making the snow day decisions as well, I figured that might be better suited.
Not so sure about that.
All right, so then we would look for a motion on the personnel items. And a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next we have the approval of the candidates to interview. Um, you have that in your packet. Does any building and ground, you guys wanna comment on any of those? I see the list here, is that?
You just look through them all and try to come up with the, with the helpful kind of wits up then, Paul and ones that align best with our district, I guess.
Okay, you guys are all comfortable with these, these four? Okay, I mean, they look very similar. I mean, there's little tweaks here and there to each one, but that seems to be the, the way it works with all these things.
They don't like the apples, the apples.
Right. Yeah, so they wanna tweak this side so they can do a little better on this side and yeah, so anyway.
It's a little bit of a guessing game when it comes to that stuff.
So.
And this is just mainly based on their fee structure. Um, Darren had asked to get some clarity there, so they have that. But I think some of the other pieces that like Brightbach has some experience in this area. And so we wanted somebody who is probably more local, I think, is, is one group to look at. I think ICS has been with some schools that have taken a little while to get a plan.
as one group to look at, I think ICS has been with some schools that have taken a little while to get a plan to pass, and so they had some good pieces there to help with that, Kraus Anderson, of course, I think Darren you had said that they, did they do a project in the area or even? Government services, so just some of that knowledge there that they have, and then Knutson just seemed to have a very experienced team. You know, but again, location was a little bit different for them, but I think Brightbach also worked on the Ashby School, so we saw some schools that were gonna be similar in size to ours or similar needs. And so that's why we kinda decided to look at those pieces, which will then also help us go out and get our staff on some tours to see some different spaces, especially in the elementary and CTE, to see some of those pieces there, so what we need to do tonight, I think, is make sure that you're comfortable recommending those four for interviews. We did initially set next Tuesday, the eighteenth, as the night to interview. Witsett said it takes about forty five minutes for each interview, remember we're not recording that because I think they said would be unfair to the other groups that are unfair to the first group that's interviewing and having the other three sit out there and take, there's proprietary information that they would be concerned about, and then, but they thought forty five minutes for the interview, fifteen minutes for each group to one group to leave and the other group to get in and get settled and ready to to do the interview, so if we start at five, it's till nine o'clock on Tuesday? Or do we start earlier, I think Nathan, when we talked to him, I thought he said five, didn't he, Darren, it was five o'clock kinda his timeframe. Do you remember that, Ryan, I guess I? I thought five o'clock was the, so looking at a five to nine timeframe, and is there, I guess, a particular order as you look at those two? They're not really listed in any particular order, but if you say, hey, we would like this group first, we can definitely do that.
I think you probably have to just figure out what's gonna work for them to make sure that.
They've all been notified to say.
Know that that's the day and they're all okay.
They were, they were told the board needed to make final approval tonight, but they were given advance notice to say currently you are on the list, recommendation. But they'll get a follow-up email tomorrow to say if you have been invited for an interview on November eighteenth, so they know the 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 time range and the date, but they didn't, weren't given a specific time yet.
Sure. Okay. I don't know if you pick them out of a hat and go that way, I don't know if it matters which one goes first, but. So. We'll let you figure that, you go ahead and slot them in there.
I can do that, okay.
So we're good with five o'clock start time on the eighteenth. And then I would just need a motion to accept those four candidates to interview. And a second. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Then the last item, just another facility planning and idea of a survey came up. I know I talked with Darren a little bit. As far as a staff type survey, one thing talking with Nathan a little bit as we sat in some meet and confer, staff's not really a big fan of surveys all the time, so I guess the one sentiment was, if we're gonna do a facility survey and a general staff survey, is there a way we can make it so it's one survey versus making two different surveys and bombarding them with extra survey stuff, so I guess that was where the conversation starts, I guess, are their thoughts on that, on what we, what we'd like to see from a survey? And then at the same time, can we knock that out in one, one shot versus giving them a survey for staff climate and then a survey for buildings and a survey, you know, we don't want to do that because they have expressed that in our meet and confers that they're not necessarily, surveys aren't their favorite things to do after school or whatever, so. Anyway. Just a item for discussion here, so. Any thoughts?
I would refer that they're separate when it comes to facilities versus the general health of the district. I think that that should be, that facilities thing should be kept different, done in, kind of in a different way. Whether is that's part of your kind of going to look at other schools and those kind of things, I mean, the facility side, they've been through that over and over and over again and it really, as far as the facility stuff, that really comes down to if we pass up. That's when it really gets involved in where things are at, how many, kind of. Space wise, we should already have been doing that, I would assume with task force, and then we gotta get going on finalizing that. So if, if staff needs to be surveyed on the facility side for that reason, we kinda gotta get going at it. Because we, we gotta have that accomplished so that we know what we're actually going out for and how much we're actually asking for. But from the general health side of the district, that to me is different, you know, that's looking at different things like PLCs that, you know, are they getting out of it? What, you know, is it beneficial? Are there any other ideas, e-learning, how are, how are they seeing that, is that beneficial to them, to them as a teacher, or are they seeing hearing things from parents? Or, or their parent themselves and they may have some, but I'm still looking at it from a staff perspective, not as not so much as if they have kids in the district, but more from a staff perspective. There's just a lot of different, a lot of different things, wellness and safety, I mean, I love that wellness piece that Nate and Caitlin are putting together and all that, it's really cool, but are there, you know, do they feel safe? Do they feel like behaviors are being taken care of in the proper way? Is there anything that they can bring forward for the communication between parents and with different things, whether it's behaviors or something else, just a early outs? Do they like the new early out system, from a staff perspective, not from a parent, from the parents, I've heard they love it. The Fridays, but, you know, from a staff perspective, is it better than the Wednesdays or whatever that we had before? Kids be able to get through their week in a more consistent fashion because it's on Fridays, so. I mean, I don't have the whole list, but then, I mean, it'd take a few of us board members to see what we want to know, because you know, we're, we're going through, gonna go through negotiations for, for our administrators and and we want to know from our perspective, or from we kind of, we wanna, I would assume every board member wants to know as much as they can, make good decisions, so we help if people need help and we recognize what's great to probably the side that we really focus on, because we do have good people, so I don't, I don't think there's gonna be a ton of. But I can tell you we're not perfect, and nev- never gonna be, you can, you can get better all the time. So we gotta find those things that maybe you know, not always fun looking at them either, from perspective is you might have to look in the mirror a little bit, but I think if everybody does it in the right way, it's, it's extremely beneficial to advance you to the next level all the time and stay better than everybody, you know? You can bring back basketball, there's great players, but you can still find ways for them to be better than they were, and don't let them be satisfied with where they're at, so. I guess that's, I probably would have more to say, I just didn't really prepare anything, but that's where I'm coming from. Is it's not to pick at somebody for this or that, it's to to advance us to again the next level and just keep getting better at everything we do. And as I said, that's not always easy, sometimes you gotta, you know, there might be some things that come up that you go I didn't know that about me, what's going on, but when you actually have to look at it, sometimes you'll go in on, you're right, we can, we can do better.
Yeah, I think system checks are always a good thing, there are systems, and so we need to evaluate those pieces there, I, I did kinda visit with Mr. Wood a little bit about that, and I think maybe it's something Darren, probably more important if our leadership team folks review it to say, hey, these are the pieces, I know we did the Johnston survey last spring, I think, I'm not sure everybody completed that, but I think it's a good check again to say, hey, here's where we were last year, where are we at now, and that does include a lot of that school safety stuff, but again, it's a systems check, it, and I think it's gotta be done, I think the key words that you said, doing it correctly. You gotta do it the right way to get the right information, you know, that way, and sometimes those don't always turn out to be beneficial if they're not done the right way.
We should honestly have the board look at that survey that we did last year, it answers a ton of what you're talking about Darren, so I think at some point we can send you the link to go through the, you can do the survey too, but I think that might be worth looking into, because it is a very, it's a very good survey.
I've forgotten that, and that's the, make it incredible. Let's look at it, do another check, I use that same instrument.
Yep.
We have the data from last year on that survey.
I think it's one that's been vetted out, right, I mean, it's always hard to find those right surveys to do that, so and I know with the HRS work that I've done in the past, there's some pieces there too for the, like you said, the safe schools of, hey, are these pieces here? I know one of the things that they always talked about, they said, you know what, talk to the students and the teachers, but also talk to the custodians, because they're gonna be able to tell you, hey, this hallway is never supervised by anybody, and so sometimes it's some of those pieces there, students will give us great feedback, I think doing some of those listening sessions with them to say, hey, we're gonna have pizza here and I want to talk to twenty of you, and it's not just student council NHS, that's what some schools do, they go to the easy ones to talk to. I want to talk to the ones that aren't having a good day most days, and so what can we do differently that way, you know, there, so I think there's some opportunity to do that, but again, it's checking systems to say, where are our systems at and how can we improve those systems?
If we could see that, like, when would you do that again, like, next spring, the same timeframe, roughly?
We could probably do it whenever, we, we just have to get it set up with the, the organization that puts it on, it's an independent entity, but.
I mean, it, it makes us do it, you know, every, every six months, once a year or whatever, we keep that going. And so really linking to this systemic feature we're trying to build in the district, I like that.
I would say maybe spring, because we got to give ourselves a little bit of time of what we started to implement, I think some people it's still new. Some are concerned that, it's been a lot of talk, has the action been there, so I think we're trying to get all those pieces is, just to be fully to disclose.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, so when was this last survey done?
We'd have to look back and see when we did it, it was, would, would have been last spring, I don't remember, February probably.
The board provided the results of the survey.
Yes, I thought, I think we talked about it at a board meeting.
I think that was part of what we brought to even say, should we go out to the Justin's Renaissance Conference, so let me double check to see on that, so.
I mean, I'm okay with what you're saying, but I also want to I'm bringing it up from a board perspective because it's something I'm interested in, so I want to be able to see the results, I don't want them to get just
Well, these results are.
At the administrative level, and then as long as the staff is comfortable with how this survey is performed, so that they feel like they can give you know, accurate and honest feedback.
Well, that's the beauty of this survey, is it's done through Justin, so it didn't come collected to us, and Darren, I think we take that one step farther. We let our community and our parents tell us how we're doing as well.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's. I mean, I'd like to see it to see what questions are on it, so if we have any feedback, I don't know if anybody else will, but.
I'll look back and add it.
I would like to see it, and those are the pieces that, I guess are important to me, is that the staff feels comfortable filling it out. Correct questions are on there so you can get good feedback and.
And if I remember correctly, I believe we have a little can oversight and like, we can say, hey, can we make sure we add this question in or, you know, we can tweak it a little bit and then run it through the the entity that does it, so if I remember correctly on that.
Cause there was, there was one piece that we did bring up to the Justin's, the, because the, the survey writer is from Minnesota, so what was the thing that we did? There was, because I went to that session, I'm trying to think of what we mentioned was one of the hiccups in the survey, often when I look at it, I'll double check, but yeah, that was the beauty, is she said, okay, how does the survey work? Are there other questions you'd like us to ask, and so I think we can give a few, I think they want to keep their general questions, because it meets what their program goals are, but I think there's other opportunities there, but yeah, I think there were some pieces there that we felt we didn't get the information, or there was something there that didn't get what we needed.
You know, regarding that facility space, and maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but it feels like if we did a facility, facility facility survey now with staff, we are, we are in a different spot than we were with the task force last year and what they could tell us. I, I don't know if this is the right time to do that, if we should, like, once it the bond passes, then you do it, or what would we learn now that we didn't learn last year during the task force from the survey? Is it worth it right now?
In, in speaking with Witsett, that was just part of the process, as we're, you know, evaluating what, what the needs are.
Right.
You know, is this, you know, is, are we getting the, is the staff, you know, does the staff feel that the task force did it, you know, all those kinds of things like. Well, it was in there, it's, it's on their timeline, is, is, is getting that feedback from staff to ensure that when we, and this was talked about in one of our previous bonds as well, is that you know, it's, it's really tough to go out and be successful with a bond if the staff isn't on board with the bond that you're going for, so if we're gonna go out for a bond and let's, you know, pick, you know, there's a group of staff that don't believe this is the right option, or don't believe that the bond is, is done correctly, or don't believe there's enough gym space in the, you know, like those pieces. If they are not supportive of that, and now that trickles into the parents in their classroom and it, it kinda shoots you in the foot for your bond process, if you're not, if you're not making sure that those things are. So anyway, and, and I think in one of them, and I don't, again, I don't remember which bond it was, but they just said if, if your house isn't in order, you can't, you know, go out to the public to try to get supportive. You don't have support in the house, you know, in the school to begin with, so that was just one of those pieces, again, I know they said there's different ways to do it, and there's all the, you know, the timing is, it's on their master big spreadsheet of when you do these things. I just don't, again, my only concern is that we've already heard some negative feedback about surveying and, and all this things over the last, I'm not saying currently, but over the last few years, oh, we don't want to fill out another survey at the end, you know, like May's not a good time to do a survey because it's the end of the year, and February's not a good time because we're in the winter low, and, and all these times when they don't want to fill out a survey, so.
That's why if, they have to see that it's beneficial. And the things that they're putting on there, if they're corrections or or that they're saying something's done, that, you know, you emphasize that part of stuff that you're doing good. Or the things that they put on there that they feel like need to be corrected, if they're not being corrected, if the survey isn't serving a purpose and things aren't happening, that creates the attitude of why do another survey? Because we're putting things down and it's not happening. So that's where I, I'm like, if, if they're, if they're complaining about surveys, then maybe that could be part of the issue, that they're filling things out and it isn't getting accomplished, I, I'm not, I don't know. But that just could be a reason, but I also, you made a good comment of why I think you want to kind of tie it together in one aspect that makes sense of where, you know, your own house isn't in order.
Right.
Then the other, then the other part, so. I can see how you could meld it together a little bit.
Your, your, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the survey type that you're looking for, I just want to make sure that, you know, we need some of those answers as we move forward in a bond process too, right, we need to know that everybody feels like this process is, is the right one, or that we're, we're planning adequately, or, you know, the, the plan that we have, you know, if I think that we really need a bigger door in the, in the library and the librarian doesn't think that, doesn't make any sense to put it on there, right, because that's gonna not go well. So anyway, those are pieces that we've talked about in the past, that again, that's kind of some of that talk.
Portions of it would mesh together, you know, like safety, if they don't feel safe in the building for whatever that reason that might be, whether it's cameras or physically people watching or doors not getting locked, or whatever that is, then I could see how, you know, that might be something we have to emphasize in taking this concept to a reality of space and things that we're going to do and all that stuff, which I know we can't do.
And if you don't feel safe now, does that?
But then we gotta get at it.
Does this plan, does it address your safety concern, right? I mean, tho- those are the ideas of, in that process, right? Okay, I don't, I don't feel like the doors are locked here in my current situation. Does this plan show you that we're gonna address that issue so that we are moving forward in the right direction, right? I mean, so those are kinda the ideas.
Right, one, we're not just saying we're addressing it as we're doing it with a physical door lock or something, because we have door locks now, so if doors aren't being locked, it's operator error for the most part, or one doesn't work and it isn't getting fixed. So we have to make sure that we're not just every time something comes up, and I'm not saying that's what you're saying.
No, right.
I'm just saying, can't tie it into just a new facility and saying that, well, we haven't been doing anything right for the last three years, and all of a sudden we get a new door, it's gonna all of a sudden be locked off. Well, if, if we're still not doing the operator part right, it's not gonna be locked, so we gotta address that.
Now that I hear the kind of, the context for our facilities survey, which I was like, I already had that from last year, I guess maybe we could ask Wyson to give us a sample of a survey another district used, and we could look at that and see if that allows us to build some consensus around it, if that makes sense?
Sure.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, we have to tie it together. I mean, if they already had a survey as far as the stuff that I was looking for outside of facilities.
Yeah.
Then, like I said before, all I wanna do is I wanna see it myself, to see if there's anything that's in my head that I would like to maybe address in it somehow. You guys would have to figure out how you would ask that question.
And maybe.
And then that we're able to see it.
I can hear that, sorry.
You know, that you're able to, as board members, it's our job, might, the way I, I look at it as, you need to analyze things, I mean, you got great employees, you can't trust everything, you gotta, you gotta look into it yourself, that's what we were elected to do.
One if it went to meet and confer and said, hey, you know, Wyson is really recommending, this is a practice they had, we know you express some red reputation about this, we're gonna follow through on the, you know, cultural climate survey that was done last year, but we'd like to look at this, what are your thoughts about that and get some feedback from meet and confer, so we, they don't feel like they're just slammed in.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
I feel like we got the people in place administratively to do this well and do it right, and just go advance ourselves further than we are, and just, 'cause we keep getting better, and there certainly is nothing wrong with that, I, that I can think of.
Alright, so we'll maybe look with Witsat to see what that, what that would look like, and maybe address it on our timeline to make sure that that's coincides with those things, and if you, you know, track down that old results, and we can get those. Any other comments on that? The only thing we have left to do then is we have to go through all seven hundred and seventy-one of our students, and we have to verify their names are spelled correctly.
Well, if they're paying attention at the beginning of the meeting, they're going six ninety-one.
Yeah. Is there a second? Motion carries.